So we need the approval on the resolution two.
Nope. You want to, as John specified, the terms of the contract so that he can get that put together.
Okay.
Interim Engineer's Contract.
The interim county engineer contract is gonna be, has been offered to Ben, Ben Lutz, um, and his compensation will be an extra thousand dollars. Is that a pay period?
Per month.
Per month. Per month.
And then term, the...
Termination July first.
Yes.
Up to...
Up to...
Up to July first or two weeks ago.
I would say June thirtieth.
I think that's what it was, June thirtieth?
Just June, July first, July first starts in New York.
June thirtieth, June thirtieth. With a two-week clause to extend or...
Right.
Stop the contract. Right? Everybody agree to that?
Everybody wants to agree to that?
Do you agree back to motion Peggy?
No.
No, but I can when I start typing it, um, but it won't be that hard.
Do we have any motion on that effect?
I would move that we extend the contract to Ben Lutz for extradition on seven thousand, additional one thousand dollars a month for a period up to June thirtieth with a two-week clause saying you could extend or stop the contract at that time.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second? Second by Dave. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Okay, now you can do the resolution. We put a resolution on there to approve you to, um, sign all the certification of completion of work and final acceptance thereof on the farm-to-market and federal or state construction.
Do we need to read this or what? The resolution?
Can if you want to, or I can, or...
Well, you wanna read it, go ahead.
Sure.
The resolution twenty seventeen dash twelve, Peggy typed it up here.
Be resolved by the Board of Supervisors of Humboldt County, Iowa, that Ben Lutz, the county engineer in Humboldt County, Iowa, be and is hereby designated, authorized, and empowered on behalf of the Board of Supervisors of said county to execute the certification of completion of work and final acceptance thereof in accordance with plans and specifications in connection with all farm-to-market and federal or state aid construction projects in this county.
So we need a motion to that effect?
I'll make that motion to adopt resolution twenty seven seventeen twelve.
Second that motion.
Second by Eric. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. So that will be signed when our fearless leader returns.
Congratulations, sir.
Yes.
Thanks, man.
We appreciate it very much.
Thanks for being us out. Thank you.
Keep up the good work.
So now, my question is, um, are we, are we headed in the right path here as far as we're, what are we, we don't know when our personnel is coming?
Right.
So we're assuming that the, someone said something, did you say they're putting snow fences up, they're putting, they've got the sand mix? Because all of that stuff is now on your shoulders, where, where are we at with all of the? Well, I, I don't, I don't know, I just wanna make sure that we don't get fourteen inches of snow and we got, we didn't have the sand ready, the trucks weren't...
The, uh, the, the sand is already, snow fence is going up this week, uh, a lot of it is already up, um...
Can't do that, just FYI, because some of the farm work hasn't been done, so they have to wait till the farmers get their anhydrous or their crops ripped so that they can put their fence or that, so that's, some of it's been waited on, so...
Right, right. Um, from what I understand, the Humboldt shop at least is starting to put on snow equipment, whether it's, uh, the, the wing hitch, um, just, they're, they're getting ready.
Good.
I mean, we're, we're almost in December now, it's, it's not if, it's when.
Yeah, the sand in the hourglass is just kinda... We hate to hear that, but I guess that's part of the nature of the beast, otherwise we'd all be living in Florida and we'd get pictures on a...
Right, if it was...
Video of what it looked like in Iowa.
Well, the majority of our phone calls that we've received in the past, uh, should be easier to handle now that we have a mailbox replacement policy. I mean, the people that call in mad because our mailbox got knocked over, those calls can remedy now. You know, okay, where, where you at, we'll, we'll make a note of it and try and get something out there.
Okay.
Whether it's temporary or it was...
Not frozen hard enough that we can do something, then...
Right, and, and what we've gotta do between now and Christmas is probably build a dozen temporary mailboxes, you know, because there are quite a few mailboxes out there that are in disrepair.
Okay.
For a snowstorm, they will fall off.
Which reminds me that Sue sent me some language to change the mailbox ordinance, and I'll hopefully get that on next week's agenda for you guys, so that you can have your first reading anyway.
Okay.
Good.
Then you have the, you have the option to either do the second, third, or just pass that after the first.
Awesome. Anything else there, Ben?
I don't believe so.
Well, we appreciate your help and...
Tell me to give you a call after they've got these all signed, so you can come get them?
Yeah, that's fine.
All right. That should wrap that up.
Paul's pick up out there now?
Uh, mine is out there.
Oh, Paul's?
Yeah, Paul's is very...
In the shop?
He, he didn't clean it out, uh, ten weeks ago, I believe, so he's removed all of his, all of his books and everything, whichever ones, the better ones, whatever.
Is there, um, this was coming from Wade, removed county in Iowa, but, uh, there was, they had a long-time engineer, he basically disretired, had been county engineer for years, and, uh, he kept logs, engineering logs, of all the things that he'd done over many years at, in the county. Do you have such a thing, uh, they were, you know, public record, just as engineers do? You know, it could be a box culvert, it could be, you know, whatever. Is there anything like that, um, you know, that's been done over the years that you're aware of?
Uh, I guess I'm, I'm confused what you're asking. We've got copies of all of the plans for everything that we've done, whether it's grading projects, bridge projects, uh, overlay projects, we've got all of the plans that were ever approved. We don't have plans for like, uh, the nineteen twenties and thirties structures that...
No, it's, it's a little more than plans, although that would be part of it. It's, uh, the fact that the engineer, it's kinda like a log, you know?
I think Paul keeps a daily log of his calendar with when he's in the office, when he's in the meeting, when he's working.
No, yeah, yeah, Paul, Paul's got a, a yearly calendar just like that one where he details his hours, what he's doing.
Right, and it, it isn't that so much, it's, it's a little bit more, and I can get a little bit more specific information, but if it was something, and I don't know if it's a requirement, or it's just that this guy happened to be a very meticulous person, that, uh, you know, he had, yes, he had the plans and, you know, all the hard and fast things that were done, but this was his notations of, you know, how this project did, went, what we did, how we did it.
Construction notes or...
Construction, you know, just, and, and he did, he had something from every day, but he was there for practically thirty years. He's a long, a long-serving county engineer, and so I don't know if Paul has something like that.
Most of those are like personal records, I mean, where he runs a day-to-day diary as far as what he did, um, but there's nothing that's required.
There's nothing that's, uh, yeah.
There's no requirement. We, we run a, a, a daily diary on construction projects that lists what the contractor did each day, but, uh, as far as day-to-day, what you do individually, I mean, you fill that out on your time machine, but...
Well, you spend all your time writing things in the book.
Just, uh, a, a lot of, you spend a lot of time with the bills, yeah.
Well, yeah, I mean, obviously you do have past records of projects and such, but this is a little bit more of that. And I'll, I'll, let me get a little more detailed information, but it doesn't sound like you necessarily have that log, per se, from, you know, the engineer's perspective. You know, he probably put in notes, if this went good, this didn't go good, you know, because part of that conversation was that he was able to look back for his own county, and he had surrounding counties that would ask questions. Hey, you know, when you did this, and it could have been ten, twenty years ago, and he said, let me look back, and he, he had this all categorized where he was able to research and, and get back, you know, how that worked, that project, you know, similar one, so... No, it probably isn't a requirement, I don't believe it, so, but, you know, yeah, you do have historical record of everything.
Right, you'd have to go back to the project folder and see if there's any notes.
Yep, and you may have some of that.
Right.
And that's all, stay at the engineer's office.
Right, yeah, I mean, all of that's filed with the project itself.
So, anyway, if I've got anything more detailed on that, I'll sure, we'll, we'll get about it.
Yeah.
All right, we appreciate it very much, Ben, if you need anything, give us a call.
Yep.
Thank you. Okay. How is the, uh, you, what's this authorized chairman to sign the election participant and release with the Iowa Insurance Division?
Did you have a chance to look that over, John? Okay, you remember back with IGHCP, and they did some, um, the insurance division did some checking, and they did, had a settlement, like a lawsuit, or, and they settled, and this county was able to recoup some money. This is another person who's involved in a different capacity related to IGHCP, and so now they're asking us to sign the release for our share of the money in that one. And there may be two, up to two others, from what I'm hearing, from the IGHCP group.
Okay.
If John has no objections to us.
Review?
So this would be authorization to have Rick or myself?
It would be yourself, 'cause you're the chairman today.
I guess I'm the one, so I'm looking for...
Second?
Any more discussion? I thought Eric had a question.
Nope, I just, nope, I was just gonna say the motion was that you could sign it, so yes, I second that motion.
Second right there.
Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. So five Bruce Rymers?
Yep, that would be declared.
Can't believe it's ten minutes to ten, all we got is reports, no drains to do.
Well, we better approve the claim.
Yep, we got claims.
So anybody have time to look?
I reviewed the claims, a hundred and fifty-six thousand, nine hundred and sixty-four dollars and twenty-five cents, I moved approval thereof.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second, any more discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, we'll pay the claims. So how about, uh, discussion on wind energy ordinance, is, is, did you have any free minute to...
Well, no, but I, I'm coming back to get some guidance as far as what y'all want me to look at, because there's differing counties, they have done different things, uh, so basically there's two tracks. There's the, we don't really want windmills, but we'll have an ordinance that sort of allows them, or we don't care if we have windmills, but we'll have an ordinance that will allow them if they want to come, so...
Well, somewhere in between that.
Somewhere in between that will probably frustrate it, so if you do something in between, then you're probably never gonna get windmills. My suggestion would be, we either go with ordinances that are in counties that have windmills, if that's the direction you guys think you wanna go, or we go in the direction of counties that don't have windmills and will never have them. If you do something in the middle, then my understanding of these projects is for them to get off the ground and work, you need quite a few. There are some counties that allow, basically, under forty, under thirty, um, those would be restrictive counties, you're probably not gonna get a wind energy product, project coming to, if, if, um, my understanding is you need like a hundred, around a hundred, or to, to get off the ground and be worthwhile, we have to be moved, because this may end up going away in a couple months.
With the new town.
But, you know, the question that y'all need to answer with your, with your ordinance that you wanna, you wanna pass is, do we want this to be something that would allow a wind energy project to come to Humboldt, or do we want this to be something that will not allow? I think if we go in the middle, that you just, you're probably not gonna get one. If we go restrictive like Calhoun or Kusuk, we're probably not gonna get one. If you go permissive like Webster, I guess, Boone and Greens, and there's a bunch of other wind energy projects around the state, like those places, then you at least would have the option of getting one.
So when you say permissive, I mean, that, that...
It, when you, you talk about the noise levels, setbacks, and proximity to each other, there's, and there's, there's a cap or anything like that, but the way these are written, you can tell by how they're written, if, if you can put a lot of windmills there or not, so if, if you do something in the middle, then you're probably, unless it's on a county at large with another county, you're probably gonna go ahead and, and restrict or decrease the popularity of wind, wind energy projects that come to Humboldt.
As I look through these codes, you either follow the codes like they did in Webster County and Boone County, and go clear outside of state codes and do like they did in Webster, uh, Boone County. Basically, Webster County and Boone County forbid them follow the codes.
When we have, I guess, if, if you wanna talk about it like a wind energy project's coming to Humboldt, and you want that to come, but you wanna have control, then we have resources, especially in Webster Counties right next door, who'll be willing to help us with that, and, you know, some of the things, the suggestions that they have for what they didn't anticipate, we can, we can steal from that, or the list is requiring one trucking company.
But there again, John, if that's a good point, you've got this, other counties that have been through this, isn't that the point of getting this ordinance written, you want that language in the ordinance so that you have that to... You know, as a, you know, more than a leg to stand on, but you have that to say, okay, it does, there still is some requirements. I, I don't like the idea of, you know, completely for or completely against, I think there's certainly gotta be some of that.
You write the ordinance, it's made on a state-of-the-awful law, and that takes care of itself.
If you write the ordinance based on the code, then that would allow a wind energy project to come, project to come here. If you write the ordinance is based on how some other counties have, then it's going to be prohibited from the start, they're just gonna go somewhere else. And I don't know, I, I don't know what you guys want.
Here's the state code.
I mean, as far as, as far as wanting to protect yourselves, but you only end up with a giant mess if one comes here, I don't think that's too difficult. I think we have around statewide, many different wind energy products, projects, and I don't see that any of them are that. There are things they wish they would've had in place before they came, so, you know, my, my idea would have been working out with what ended up being basically the engineer's office working with Mid-America in, in Webster County, is how a lot of that came to be. And that would be similar here, is you end up with your zoning ordinance, but then separate from that, you're gonna have to have an agreement with whatever energy company, most likely Mid-America, would come here to outline how their project is gonna go, so you have your zoning ordinance that would allow the permitting process and allow them to apply and get approval, and then separate from that, you would have, how in the world are they gonna be putting in all these field drives and all these extra trucks and, um, windmills? And that would be, because they need, they need permission from the engineer to put in another field drive, or to work in the secondary road right away, or block traffic, they're gonna need to get specific permits from the engineer's office, separate from all of this. So you end up, when you saw the, the sample agreement that Webster County set up with their engineer and Mid-America, so it, basically, there's several different wind energy ordinances out there. The idea of me just putting together one that takes from both the restrictive and the permissive, I, I think you're gonna end up with the situation you don't want, which is, no one understands what's going on.
No, I don't know, I, I, I don't really like that. I think, I'm not against the windmills, it's whatever the farmer wants or the property owners want. If the big companies coming in, like Mid-America, they're gonna put a hundred of them in. It may be two or three counties wide, but they're gonna put a hundred in to get on the grid.
Right.
Like they've done in all the other places, Harcourt and Blarckburg and Fonda, all them, they put, they put a bunch in. I don't wanna see, uh, some outfit come in here from wherever and put one here, and sell this farmer one, and then one down here and sell this farmer one, but I think we need to protect our property and our farmers.
Right, that's, that, that I appreciate, that's the most guidance that I've gotten. I mean, I, basically, I think you're sending me on a full there, you want me to come up with something, I have no problem doing that, I can come up with whatever, but, uh, it matters what you guys want, right? And so, if, if you want me to just come back with a couple options, I can do that. It should, I mean, I think...
Well, I think that the, the simple fact that Humboldt County isn't any different than any other county, we're not, we aren't flush with cash, and, you know, that they are, there are some benefits for having these, if, if they would help improve our, you know, ability to, you know, you get taxes and you get whatever off them, so we're, but we're, like Dave said, we wanna make sure that the farmer or the person that owns the land is the person that's gonna have the ability to say yea or nay.
Right.
Just 'cause we have an ordinance, you know, um, they still have to be the ones to sign off on and say that they're willing to allow it to be there. Um, when Jerry was here and said, you know, we just don't want, uh, those things to be walked away from in thirty years or whatever. I, I, I don't know, could we come up with any now? I don't know if there's any of them that have ever walked away.
Not yet, but they haven't been.
Yeah.
They haven't been there thirty years.
On twenty-five years.
Yeah, but it, you know, that's one location.
Well, that's one location, that's the longest location they've got, is in the Alta area.
But we don't know if that's been there.
No.
That's gotta been there forty years.
I'm guessing at least that, and they're still...
We had them in Corvallis, you know, and I was working for them, and they had them in Corvallis then.
So I guess, to me, um, I don't...
I'm not...
I'm not against them, I just, I think that all we're trying to do is put in a, we aren't trying to keep them at bay, and we aren't trying to open up the door and say, here, put them in your barn.
Yeah, that's, that's where I was kinda out with this whole...
Is that mutually exclusive, or do you have, or do you don't wanna have them in there, but you don't want one of them to go?
I think the job of the board of supervisors is to come up with an ordinance, either we allow them or don't allow them, then the zoning board has to issue the permits and so forth, once we get the ordinance done, that, that gets us done.
Yeah, we just wanna protect the farmer though, and at the end, if one of them blows up or the blades come flying off of it, and he just leaves it sit there, you know, if it's Mid-Americans or one of the big power companies, they're gonna repair it. If it's one of these guys that just come in and sold the guy the windmill, they may just sit there. So we wanna protect the farmer too, that if something happens that way, then it gets repaired or tore down.
Well, I guess, so what, what are you, what direction are you trying to tell, John, the middle of the road and...
Well, we're trying, basically, the gist of it's middle of the road, and I'm not, you know, we do represent the entire county and the people in it.
Some of the, some of the concerns that you have as far as the specific farmer, uh, we can put whatever we want in our ordinance, a lot of that is gonna be addressed in there, specifically agreeing with Mid-America, which will be...
Right.
My understanding of the agreements are, once that wind turbine goes up, Mid-America is then responsible for everything having to do with that wind turbine, maintenance, repair, taking down, replacing, whatever. They're responsible for that. The question that, my specific question would be, you know, the decibel level, if you set it well enough, then you're not gonna, you're gonna, it's gonna be too prohibited.
Well, yeah, you can write all that into it.
If, if you set the decibel level higher, then it will allow more than a few individuals. If, um, you know, you're talking about spacing, when you drive south down one fifty-nine, you see how close all those windmills are, or wind turbines are, you know, if, if you're gonna put them, if you want spacing as far as, you know, a mile or two apart, then, you know, in a county like Humboldt, you're not gonna be able to get that many in. So, you know, the other thing you don't have to worry about here is our neighboring counties, we can put them up to the border. You know, there's some counties that they can't even, if they meant that they would fall, they can't fall in the other county. They can't, anything to do with the other county, so it, it's not, it's just, when you said, go find a, an ordinance, that's easy, I could find several really quickly, and we could come up with one that fixes the problem, I mean, I, I don't know... I could just come back with a couple, and you guys can look at them and decide what you wanted.
As I look through this various ordinance, one of the variables, some counties say all feeder lines have to be buried, some counties say they have to be overhead. Well, you're gonna get six of them, six of one and a half dozen the other, something like this, something like that.
I mean, there's, it's sort of like building a house, you give me how many bedrooms and bathrooms, and then we can tile together the rest of the details later.
Well, I just have this, this fear that if you just think it's a for or against deal, I mean, maybe it's that simple, you know, we could find out. But maybe it's not, you know, we have a phenomenal amount of drainage in this county, so there's tile all over the place. You know, how do we know in an ordinance, uh, you know, if they're paying attention to that? They, you would think they are, John, to the other responsible, but is, is that somewhere along the line, you know, has to have teeth, just as the fact if they build them today, and ten years down the road it's defunct, you gotta have something that they take them down. You know, there's things that we just can't leave hanging out there, um, you know, we're all familiar with telephone companies have buried thousands of miles of fiber optic and other type cables in right-of-ways. Lots of tile lines have been cut, broke, screwed up, they, you know, yeah, if you can find it, usually they're good enough to come back and fix it. Do they necessarily, would they have to after a certain amount of time? I don't know, but we don't want things out there that possibly could be detrimental to, you know, the general public or any of our infrastructure.
I doubt very much if the southeast four township of Humboldt County are any different than Webster County as far as drainage and tile lines and all that good stuff. Why reinvent the wheel? Why, why? Well, are we much different than cross our neighbors to the south? I don't know. I, I share your concern.
You know, I mean, they just don't want...
I don't think we're that much different than our neighbor.
I don't, I don't think so, we're, we're pretty much same type, they've got drainage, we've got drainage, they've got a lot of tiles, patterned tile.
We just have to make sure that's protected, that's my concern most of the, you know...
Well, you know what, with one twenty-five, that we're still fighting with, that when they dug across Gary's property, we heard last week that, you know, they didn't put the tile in, and I guess that is a concern that, you know, you don't wanna alienate some farmer because he rented his ground, part of it to, for a turbine, and then they're gonna come back and, well, why did you let him? We didn't, you signed it.
He had to sign it before he could put it there.
So that's the fifty-dollar question, and I guess that's, I know that's still kinda muddy the water.
Your farm's got tile lines on it, you don't want windmills there, that's your choice.
Right, and no, no landlord's gonna be forced to put a windmill on there.
No, but if there's a windmill across the section, and the transformers are sitting down here, somewhere that feeder line has to come somewhere.
Either that, or, you know, we're missing the whole, if you, John kinda mentioned the big picture, like a for or against, how do we really know? I mean...
Well, I think what, what happens with these projects is you have somebody come in and explore them, and then they decide they're gonna go forward, I don't know if you all remember the Webster County, but how many meetings they had, started like with all the landlords and the tenants, and all the questions they answered, and how many times they met with the individual farmers and the landlords about what we're gonna do, about what, what they were inclined to get, what their cost or benefits, and they worked with the engineer and the supervisors down there to get that project going, and it took how many years to get it done, I don't know, four, five, or five years? I mean, from when they said, we, we wanna do this, to when they, they finished, and, you know, I think, we can write a zoning ordinance that addresses a lot of your concerns, but the very, the narrow what happens when they go through drainage. but the, the very, the narrow what happens when they go through drainage. You know, that would be in their, I believe, in their individual contracts and in the agreement with the engineer.
Well, ordinance wise, how about, yes, definitely the landlord signs off. I mean, it's their thing, and then, yeah, you can address their drainage and it's on their land and so on and so forth. Ordinance to me means that, so they'd say the adjacent landowner, absolutely no way, no how, it's just not in his or her program. Well, this ordinance to me is, there's distances. You could get this so close to the adjacent landowner that it may be detrimental to them without a particular ordinance. And there's a lot of information out there for us to look at, you know, yes, we've seen, and John pointed out, you could put a distance that it, it ends up being prohibitive, okay? Or is there what, maybe a happy medium? I don't know. Then, for example, another discussion we had, I believe, a week ago, these hog confinement units, how close is the one to Thor? How are we doing with that deal? Okay, that happens to be, I know they're not an apples to apples comparison, but that is not sitting well with the residents in and around the Thor area, okay? What happens with windmills when you don't have some type of a, could be called a restriction, that it's, well, you know, maybe not on the property line of the landlord, but it's awful darned close, and there's nothing they can do about it, and they don't want it there. You know, their neighbor signed off, I'd take as many as you can put in my land, the, the next neighbor, I, I don't want these for whatever various-
The setbacks are all discussed in the ordinance, I believe, at, right, John?
Right.
You're not gonna make everybody happy, you know? You put ten miles back, and some people won't like it. Put ten feet, and other guys like it. But you're gonna have some people mad at you anyway.
But you have to look at something reasonable, so it isn't ten feet. Like you said, Carl, ten miles, well then, you know, that's just a done deal, that isn't gonna show up.
Well, according to Alyssa, didn't she say that before, it would be probably two years before they ever even put up the exploratory one, that said we have enough wind here to-
But she, she doesn't know. I mean, that's a conjecture.
The coast is formed the worst.
She's a, you know, that's a conjecture. I just still have in the back of my mind, you know, years ago, and I'd say it's not apples to apples, I'm not trying to make it apples to apples comparison with hog confinement or, or animal confinement units, now our hands are so tied on that and we've run into trouble. I don't wanna see the same thing happen with the windmill project.
Well, we could do the same thing. We could put the, the stiffest ordinances in effect that we could come up with, and if the state decided they wanted them every section on every corner-
Thus far, the state, not at all.
I understand that, but before, they weren't involving the hog.
Right.
They were, and then they-
The difference between these two is the state has acted on a confinement to say that the local, local people cannot make it more restrictive.
Cannot change any of the state requirements.
No, it's open. The state has acted on the wind turbine in the state, the locals cannot make it more restrictive, so-
Right.
You have individual counties making it more restrictive. If, if the state got rid of the requirements on the confinement, then we have two counties with a million hog confinement and then no other confinement in the state of Iowa. So that, 'cause it's just hard to find places to put them where nobody's around. So the good thing was when, according to me, when I was still high, people started moving from their house in the country into town and farming their house, there, there you are. So it, you know, with this, be as restrictive as you want, and that, that's where, I have no problem, I can come up with a different, a couple different ideas and-
Well, do, why don't you do that? Do a little bit more digging, and that'll give us another week to shoot it over.
Look at some of the things that you think are restrictive. I mean, and maybe make some highlights as to, you know, and you went through it enough, we've seen enough gist of the information, that, that, you know, distance setbacks, decibels, so on and so forth, things to that nature, and, and give us something to kinda look at that-
Sure.
I still think a middle of the road. I mean, I, I, you know, yeah, granted, you can make it either way, we're still looking at, okay, what are the ones, things that we really need to be most concerned of that put into an ordinance?
I think we need to look at what's been successful, what's been unsuccessful in other counties.
Yep.
You go from there?
Yep.
That works. Thank you, John.
Yep, sure.
Thanks in advance for your magic pixie dust that'll help us see through. I think we're down to committee reports.
Okay, only committee I had report till on was last week when during a work session, I get up and walked out, I went to a CCS meeting up at Algonia, regional meeting, and we had talked about a lot of things. We talked, had some of the providers there, we had all the counselors from the schools there, talking about some of the problems they have in high schools, in the counties. We talked about the new CFR building going up down at Fort Dodge and how that's gonna alleviate some of that problem. No action, just a work session. That's extending my meetings.
Okay. Uh, Tuesday, I went out, met with Mary and USDA lady inspector out, looked at a dog kennel. Uh, the inspector looked at it, she says that with a little cleanup and stuff, it would work, and she wouldn't be back for a year to look at it again if we went with it. Uh, it does have room for cats and stuff there. Uh, it's on an acreage, and the acreage is for sale, and Dean is gonna work with her, the lady that owns it, and try to get something, an agreement in writing, so we can either go with it, rental until it's sold, and then it will be dropped or continue on if the other party decides the place would let us continue on.
Where, where's the acreage?
It's, uh, out west of town.
The Rutland Corner.
Yeah.
Good work.
We gotta figure out whether she will work and Dean's gonna talk to her and her lawyer on it, see if they can get some kind of agreement worked out.
It worked, I had no official other committees this past week.
Um, nor did I.
As I asked around, talking about dog and cat buildings, it seems to me that most counties provide the facilities and the city run them. Pretty much a county has to come up with a facility, and then we turn over and let somebody else run the operation. We can't be involved with both, 'cause most of the dogs and cats don't come from rural areas anyway.
Well, and if they do, then they, we kinda have that working agreement right now, but kinda something that we could look at. So hopefully this thing will fly, and then we can get to that.
Well, good, bless you.
Thank you. I have a couple things just to-
Well, we're waiting.
I gave you a packet of information from Elder Bridge.
Yep.
This is their yearly request for money. You don't do anything with it until we go into budget sessions, but I wanted to point it out that you did have that. Um, had a quick question from Todd. The generator that they use on the Rutland Dam, um, has also been used as a backup generator for the courthouse. They're having mechanical issues with the generator, and they look, are thinking that they might be able to get something else. It's getting, like they're put, doing too much mechanical repairs to this one. If they do, do they have to get another one that's a backup generator for the courthouse, or are we gonna separate those two, or do we even need to think about? We've never used it, um, as a backup generator. I think we tried it one time just to make sure it worked. Um, I told Todd I would ask you and get back to him.
One of the things we're talking about is hazard mitigation thing is grant writing, and hopefully we'll get, write a grant to get another generator, we get, or the people have done. So that's in the mill, whether we get it or something else.
That's exactly right. Hopefully, that would be good, and then I think it would still be a one generator situation.
Right.
But like Carl said, hopefully that all works out.
But Todd is needing something now.
He does need something now.
He needs to, I would check into getting something or getting that one fixed. That's a World War II, I think, military generators sitting over there.
Can he get something just for the Rutland Dam gates, and then we'll worry about the courthouse one later? Or does he need to get one that's, that will work for both, is what he's questioning?
Oh, what, uh, what voltage is it? You got two different voltages or the same?
No, they're the same.
No, they're the same.
In case of emergency, could we not get a, one from National Guard to run the courthouse for there too, if we had to, without having one? I think they're available on emergency basis.
So let Todd get his own.
I, I would say so.
I would-
That's my opinion.
I would have him check with the, uh, surplus down at the fairgrounds in Des Moines.
Okay.
I think that's where that one come from.
Okay.
Uh, they've got a lot of military surplus stuff down there, they might be able to find another one.
Okay.
If they do, it wouldn't cost anything.
Okay.
Or very little.
And there's some other, uh, options, like similar day set surplus that are potentially slightly used from different sites, that, there's things out there that hopefully get a reasonable cost, but I would tell him that, yeah, we probably still want large enough that will work for both, but basically just needs the one, we don't need to get two.
Okay, I was gonna say, we're back to, the rest of them are saying, just get the one, and that's it.
Right.
Okay, is that what the majority is doing?
Yeah, just need the one, but it'll still would work if needed.
Well, do we have the-
No, that's not what the rest of them were saying. The rest of them were saying, just let Todd get his to run his gates, and then later we'll get one for the courthouse.
Yeah.
And if we need to, we'll go to the, uh, emergency people and have them bring it in.
Do we have the capability that we pull up out here with the generator, plug it into the side of the wall, that this place runs?
Yes, if we have the right generator, yeah.
Okay, that's what-
Yep.
Yeah, there's a plug, it's right down over here.
'Cause we can't designate to Todd what he buys, or how he buys it, or who he buys it from. He has that choice. We can give him options, I'll, I'll pass the information along, but that's up to the conservation department to decide, not you.
Right.
So, just so you know. Um, can't answer that one. Uh, Rachel sent a message from ISAC. Um, I'm sure that Carl mentioned at our ISAC board meeting, we had a gal there talking about the OPA epidemic, um, the firm that is heading that up as far as suing, um, lawsuits and that is out of Michigan, Minnesota, Wisconsin, there we go. Just asking at this point, I don't know how much you're aware of it, or how much Carl went into detail, if you are interested in getting involved in this or not, and I'm not sure if John has had any of this information, I can certainly pass it along to him too, but, uh, they need to know if we wanna be on board or if we're gonna hang back and just see what happens.
What'd they say, it's forty counties on board already?
Is there?
I think so. And what's, what's the gist of all this?
Trying to get, so down some of these drug companies on this, or use of drugs production. We don't do anything, in case they win a lawsuit, we get some of the money.
Or we get to pay the-
I don't think there's any cost involved.
I would say the attorney will get the lion's share of whatever happens.
You what?
The attorneys will get most of what-
Yeah.
Yeah. So your recommendation?
These are common, so get on board on this one, we can wait to see if there's different ones by-
Is this a class action?
Yeah.
Is there a deadline that they need to know by?
No, but they're just encouraging you not to wait too long, because you gotta do a resolution, you gotta do an engagement letter, um-
Are there any upfront costs to counties for doing this? Anybody know that?
That I don't know, I'll need to pass this on to John, maybe he looks for it.
John?
Yeah?
Can you look at, this is more detailed, I mean, you have a lot of-
I'll get your copies.
Does any upfront cost?
No, we're not, we won't pay anything. We're just members of class.
Basically, all you do is put your name on, and you're along for the ride.
If, if there's a win or there's a setback, then their question will be, how much of the settlement will be attorney's fees, and how much will go to the individual organization? They'll probably come up with either, based on population or based on victims or on population, what it would, what it would spend, and my guess is, whatever you all end up doing, if there's money there, it's not gonna be enough to open a treaty that are here, so I don't, there might be some money, I can't imagine it'd be a lot, but-
It was my understanding that this gal gave a presentation to us, a law firm, just saying, you need to sign with somebody, we hope you would sign with us.
I, yeah, I-
Their campaign to get a few direct things, right.
A bunch of law firms that are out there trying to sign up people to be part of this class, and they're going after the cities and counties to get involved in this. Might, the only thing I would say is, it's, I can look into this, but it, whether you sign up with these people or somebody else, and that's about it. But I just, I don't, there's no cost for the county to do it, other than the time to vote on some things and sign some letters, and then you'll just get out date.
Well, maybe it just comes down to a lot of things like this, does it work the headache? I don't know.
That's why I bring it to you guys, so you can tell me which way, direction to go. So anyway, for now, it's just information, I'll pass it along to John.
Pass it to John, he's gonna act, uh, figure it out.
Yep.
Okay. And I just have things for you to sign.
John, I'm giving you this letter, so you have some, like, something to talk about.
Anything else?
Motion to adjourn.
Got a motion in a second, and all those in favor?
Aye.
All those same signs, ten, twenty?